Okay, it's now 6:30 PM on November 29th, Wednesday of 2023. Called the meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen with the special meeting of November 29th. Okay. Correspondents, we had none that reached in time, unfortunately, when we did the agenda. We'll get to that later on, I think. Open for public comment. Anyone cares to comment? For you, we're gonna have two sessions of public comment. One is really on the agenda, and we'll have that upfront, and then general public comment towards the end. Please, if you have anything to say, please come up to the podium and speak loudly, state your name.
Could you speak a little louder?
Okay, I'll speak louder. Yes, the, if you're having any public comment, if you care to address the board, please come up to the podium, state your name, and when you have public comment. We'll have secondary public comment for any other concerns of the citizens at the end of the meeting, so. Any public comment on the agenda? None? Okay, we'll move to number two, or number three, excuse me. Four, to new business. We have appointments, 4.1 is appointments to the commissions. Several of them are not yet filled, and we will get to those later on, I think. The town attorneys, just for the record, are still looking at the town attorney's retention and just review of their program. It's fairly grand new thing, as to, if nothing else, extend just the current one for a little while, so we're gonna go ahead and, I will do more later to extend it for six months under the current contract. We can either accept the motion for, accept all appointments, and we can deal with a lawyer and a secondary appointment, or we can, if you have any comments or anything like that.
Yeah, I think, I think I feel more comfortable doing the attorney separately.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. We'll do that then. Okay, so, accept the motion for appointments except for the town attorney, to accept all the personnel listed on the agenda and listed on the appointments.
So, what's the second?
Okay, any other comment regarding those? Okay.
I would just say, for the emergency management director and the emergency management deputy, that we might wanna, based on the correspondence that was in the folder, we might wanna, like, advertise the fact we're looking for that and see if there are people that are interested. And then also, if we could get a copy on that job description.
Job description, I just got it, yeah. I just got it, pulled it out of the file.
And I would, I would suggest it might actually be a great service to Glenn and I, and he's for you, if all the job descriptions were in one Google Drive folder, and then we could just have more access to that sometimes.
That's a good point.
That would be really helpful.
We need to upgrade some of those job descriptions, obviously, but we'll, we'll do that. We've got a plan to do that, we talked about doing that together, so. It's a good, good point, okay. All right. But, yeah, I just pulled the job descriptions, I'll send those out to you tomorrow, and then we can look at, re-advertise that, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion still is on for acceptance of all except for the town attorneys. Just move on paper?
Aye.
Okay. You know, with Finchins or Nate, so, okay. Right, discussion now for the town attorney's position. I've mentioned, I talked to Mr. Devola, and he said if we needed to review or take some time, that they could, they would accept an extension of the current contract, and then re-look at it at whatever time period you want it to set. So, I said, okay, I'll take that to the board.
So, you, you were interested in finding somebody different?
I was interested in finding out what they've been doing and looking at the performance versus anyone else. It's a typical contract, you know, to see if there's anyone else that's, performance categories to look if we wanted to change. I'm not advocating a change, but he did make that offer, so I said I'd take it to the board and see if they're interested in doing that.
And does the contract for town attorney say Kramer and Anderson, or does it actually say Randy Devola?
Kramer and Anderson with Randy Devola has the main point of contact, although we do have other orders we use, we didn't have John, you know, so, yeah, he's the main point of contact throughout that contract.
I would just say, I think from my observations, that it has been incredibly helpful for the town to have access to all those lawyers from Kramer and Anderson. That has been a huge benefit to the town.
Yeah, you certainly have a lot of experience. I've worked with other lawyers in other areas, but, you know, he just made that offer, so I said, I'll take it up. So, we just started to talk to him, and so. Is there a motion you want to make?
I'll make a motion that we extend the current contract with town attorney Randy Devola and Kramer Anderson for six months.
Second. All right. More discussion on that? Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Three and four. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Meeting schedule for, number 4.2, we talked about meeting schedule for the year 2024. So, that's, proposed meeting schedule. Just one correction on the piece itself. It's approved as regular meeting dates for 2024, not 2023. That was the last sentence before the actual date.
And also, it says November 28th, and we're meeting on the 28th.
Oh, yeah. I can't say 28th or 4th. I don't know why I've been in that.
So, all Wednesdays are the fourth Wednesdays of March.
Sorry.
Yep. So, where it says July 28th, is that the 24th? The 28th is a Sunday. So, that is incorrect. That should read 24th. So, July is incorrect. November is also incorrect. November 19th into the 24th?
Tuesday.
Is a Tuesday.
We're gonna.
So, I understand I have to move or just thank.
Right, in the, that's, December 19th is a Thursday.
December, and December 19th is a Thursday.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah. So, just three, three changes there.
Got the other one to Tuesday, Thursday, and July, what's her?
I wondered if we could talk about the concept of whether or not, two things. One, do we wanna consider maybe meeting twice a month? I know that a previous board tried that, and there was good and bad about it. And the other thing I wondered about is if we can meet earlier in the month, because I feel like sometimes we are the slugger by shifting to the fourth week of the month, the last group to actually meet, you know? And it feels like sometime, it just feels like sometimes that a lot of stuff has happened before we meet, whereas traditionally, the slugman always used to meet the first week of the month. And I know that there was some discussion with the treasurer that she couldn't get reports ready, but I wonder if we wanted to consider maybe meeting the first Wednesday of the month? I know that's the Board of Ed meeting date, but there's so few times when the Board of Ed and the selectmen have to meet together. I just wanted to throw that out and see what you guys thought.
Well, yeah, two, the reason I thought, since we're starting out at this point with the special meeting at the end of November, is that we're going to actually be ahead of the month. I kind of looked at it from the opposite side. We'd be ahead of the month going in, and having dealt with whatever had come that month before, but also setting the tone as the next month we came through. And I just looked at it at that point for the fourth, and it was the one that didn't interfere with another board. And you're right, that probably isn't that much between the Board of Ed and the board of the selectmen, but there's, there's probably constituents in both that would be finding it inconvenient to come back and forth to all those on the same night. They're both through the biggest boards, planning and voting, of course. And that was the only reason I thought we'd look at the fourth, and since we're starting out kind of the last of the month right now, and then moving forward to do it that way. Plus, we have budget meetings coming up and all that kind of stuff. I know the next meeting is the 27th of December, I believe, is our regular.
It just seems so late, you know? It's like so much stuff can happen.
Well, we're obviously gonna have, I mean, we're gonna have some budget meetings before, then special meetings as well, that we can also deal with anything else that might come up between now and then. That's, again, was part of the reasoning why I looked at setting the schedule, so. And the time, and then, you know, doing it in person as well, looking at everybody's work schedule, making sure everybody got to eat, which is true. We need to keep our energy up. But, yeah, so, it's, what was my thinking?
As someone who, two years ago, we had regular meetings twice a month, and then last year we had one, there are pros and cons, you know? You can, you know, having two meetings a month, you know, if something happens, we can, we can address that, you know? I mean, you're here every day, but we're not, so, so I, part of me liked that, but, I mean, as long as we're efficient and we get everything done, everything's in the Google Drive, and we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing, I don't mind once a month, but there, there's a good point to be made for two. I'm okay with 6:30 as well. I know that we had four o'clock for, for some people, it was easier for Joyce over here, and others, but I'm okay with 6:30. That actually is easier for me than my, my schedule's really, really tight. But, yeah, so, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this unless we want to go earlier in the month, unless we want to go two. I don't know how you feel about this one. You want one or two?
The problem of having two regular meetings a month is that you can easily adjust the agenda, you know, like we're, you know, just getting an item on the agenda for Glenn and I is more challenging when we have special meetings, because we rely on you to put it on the agenda, Joyce to make the arrangements. And so, and I, I think at least the first half, the first half of the year, there's probably a lot of stuff going on with the budget and everything else, that meetings a month is probably not that, that big of a deal, and it's easy to cancel a meeting.
I was gonna say that, you know, there are slow months, you know, summer is fairly slow, so we don't have to meet every, you know, twice every month. I mean, you know, we could definitely cancel, so, so just something to consider.
I think, I like the, personally, I think the efficiency of the board is as important as anything, as you all know, since you went to both two and then one. I think that's, that's the important thing, and I think this board's gonna be fairly efficient, and I really believe that. So, I think the agenda, and any special meeting we have, as I said before, in my responsibility to put the agenda together, of course, with Joyce, it is all of our assistant, but we'll try to include whatever is necessary for any special meeting that does come up. I kind of like that flexibility, actually, instead of having a meeting that doesn't have anything, but the next month might, or the next week or two might have something. And I'm not really being, you know, a big fan of the person of the month, first Wednesday is competing with people that might wanna come to both. Kind of think it's a, it's kind of nice to have a time when, when people can be able to attend more meetings than they need to. Yeah, I think, I don't know. I think we're trying to get it to see how we can do it one, once a month.
If we, if we agree to one, I mean, I, I like this, you know, if we stay with, with the fourth Wednesday, but if we needed a second meeting, you know, or a special meeting, you know, I would love it to be that to be the second Wednesday, for example. So, that's, you know, if, so it's on our agenda, that's, you know, it's in our minds, that's, okay, the second Wednesday would be, would be ours, because I think that was the case two years ago, so.
That conflicts with the commission.
Right.
There's always somebody to group a meeting to.
And then, and it's, do you, Marty, do you feel that it's vital to be on a day when the treasurer is available? Because I know that was part of the reason why they picked Wednesday.
Yeah, and she's available on the last, this Wednesday as well, so that was one of the reasons, yeah. She talked, she asked if she was needing to use tonight until now, but it wasn't, you know, fairly specific to the special meeting, but having her available, and if necessary, we can ask to adjust her time, too. If we have a special meeting, we need her to attend, you know, we could, we could have to do that, so. Which if she can, of course. She does a cordial. Motion. Do you have a shot? Yeah, accept the motion. Unless there's any other, if there's any other motion. Motion either to accept the schedule as amended, with the dates changed from, to this meeting of November 29th, and meeting dates for 2024, with adjustments to the Wednesday, July 2024 to the 24th instead of the 28th. And no, it's not Wednesday, but it's Tuesday, November 19th, and Thursday, December 19th.
As I said, I'm okay with this, and if we, if we need a second meeting in the month, I would love to make it the second Wednesday, if we, if we need one, if that's better, yeah, if that ever should arise.
We can, we can adjust the motion to say that then? I'll accept that it changes the motion to, to accept it as amended, as the date's amended with the console that if we did go to a second meeting, it would be the second Wednesday.
I don't like that idea. I'd rather have a different day than, than that.
Is it a conservation?
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Okay.
We don't have to make that.
No, we don't, we can, we can drop that.
If we're at a meeting, we need to have another meeting, we can figure out that time as on the fly.
All right. Then we'll readjust the motion to read, as, as the date's amended, the 2024 regular Board of Select meetings agenda or schedule is adjusted without any kind of additional due date. Make that motion? I just offered the motion, I think you can make it.
Second.
Second, okay. All right, on paper that, accept the motion, may?
Aye.
Okay, setting the date for a town meeting. Based on all these mentionations, the need to go into setting up the town meeting, the date of Wednesday, December 6th, has been proposed as the next, as the town meeting. And we can talk the agenda in the next phase, but just set the meeting itself, Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. For a legal notice warning, a town, a special town meeting. Okay with that? Okay. Okay, all right. Move the motion, accept the date. Motion made, second.
Second.
All right, thank you. On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda now for that meeting, which is 4.4, approval agenda for the town meeting. Town meeting shall have two items on there, will be, first will be, shall the town adopt the inland wetlands water course citation ordinance chapter 8-3 as proposed and file with the town clerk's office? Sorry, talk over again. And number two, shall the town repeal the current tax abatement ordinance 18-7 and adopt the revised tax abatement ordinance for volunteer emergency services personnel in its place as proposed and is on file with the town clerk's office? That is the agenda for that date. Any comment on the agenda? Yeah, okay. Motion?
Motion to approve the special town meeting agenda for Wednesday, December 6th.
Okay. Second. On paper?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Discuss the plan for the tax abatement. This is something that, Chris and Debbie both put together, which outlines the, who are the recipients of the tax abatement and so on. It is on file. I don't need to read the names, in fact, the plan doesn't need the names at all, but there is a escrow real estate piece to it where the checks will be issued to those people, and then the other ones will get escrow credit, their, their tax bill, so.
So, this is for the, the taxes that were due October 1st, the October 1st, 2022 grant list?
Correct. 22 to yes, maybe one to yes. That's correct. That's correct, right there.
Not October 1st, but July 1st.
July 1st, yeah, October 7th.
That the first $1,000 was taken off. So, the reason the escrow I don't want to change is because at the end of Ju, the end of January, $1,000 will have been paid to this group of 10 firemen. By sending just a check to the rest of them is clean, we're not touching the escrow, because there isn't time, there not, it's 15 days after the meeting, there just isn't time to go to a bank. They've already cut the checks in a lot of cases, so that's why we're doing it this way. So, it would be $2,000 paid to the firemen by.
They don't have firemen anymore, Debbie, they're firefighters or fire department members.
Okay. Whatever they are called.
Okay. So, there's 10 people that qualify.
All in this escrow group. There also is one fireperson who will have it, it's not an escrow account, but because his bill is not large enough to use the entire $1,000, this person will be getting a check for around $200 and $800 off his bill.
But, yeah.
So, do we need any promotion, or is that just information?
It's just information at this point. No, it'll actually go into town meeting, yeah, to approve that. We just wanted to fill out information on what's happening, who, by what, which is confusing them, I think, so. Okay. Number 4.6, rescinding of the album property gift. We're back and looked at the minutes of meeting, we didn't see an actual motion that accepted the removal of the album property offer, so I thought we might as well clean that up by having a motion to accept the change.
Because they didn't, if they are the ones that rescinded our.
Correct, and I guess we're just accepting their rescinding, I think. I thought we just cleaned that up. It was kind of like the discussing left open, so I thought we'll put it on there and just say, okay, we understand it, we accept their.
So, we accept their letter?
Accepted the letter.
Their letter?
Like, like we did a letter resignation, you know?
Okay.
Make motion, accept that, too. So, just because it was on the, we took it off, the, the town meeting was part of the town meeting, so we're just gonna, I thought we just cleaned it up by doing that, so. And I have a copy of the emails, I think, maybe some of you have seen, but it really pretty quick. It says, "The family has decided to withdraw the offer to the town, kept forth in my letter, July 10th, 2023. Thank you for helping putting this before the town." Accept the motion, accept their withdrawal, so, okay. On paper?
Aye.
Just wanted to clean that up. Okay, and 4.7, it's just information, again, update on, even, there was some wording change, did not change the content at all, but it required a re-signature, so it moved from G to B, so just informing you all that we're doing that as well, so. Any questions about that?
No, please.
Thank you. And set schedule for a capital plan budget meeting, so here we go on that one. So. You put everything down on paper, because this is obviously, you have to look at your schedule and, for a given few time, obviously. I did have an idea, potentially looking at other meeting days and so on, and not being too close to what people might be going at in future days, and just look at potential of the 12th of December, the Tuesday.
What time is it?
That's open to you all, I mean, if you want to do it.
Nighttime.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
It's not a great night for me to be so fast.
I mean, Tuesday, I could force it to be 4:30 to 6:30.
I can do that.
4:30, you can do that? Okay. That works.
4:30, 4:30, and let's say 4:30.
4:30, yeah. Keep it at that, at that point, we'll bring in guidelines and start off with that, you know, and then pull the other.
Tuesday, the 7th, 12th, 4:30.
Yeah, Tuesday, 12th, right?
As long as we need to, as often as.
Okay. I think we'll just set that one meeting and then, well.
Can we have, is it, are we only gonna talk about capital plan and budget at that meeting, and can we talk about any other topics?
Yes, question, we can, something that's necessary.
Because I really think we need to talk about the Swift House needs assessment to make sure that that's moving forward.
I agree.
Swift House. I would like that to be, that's good. Okay.
And I also would like to, I don't know if this must be the meeting, but I would like for us to talk about having an FOI workshop for all the officials, employees, and commission members, because I don't think it's been done in a while.
Been a while, okay. Yeah, okay.
That's just another topic I'd love to talk about at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Set for that as well. Okay, all right. Make motion for the Tuesday, 12th of December, at 16:30, but those, we can, it won't work out, the actual agenda, as well. Okay. Motion is for the, set the, the next special meeting that will do with budget, other issues of the board, for 12th December at 4:30 in the afternoon, Tuesday.
At this point, do you guys think that we'll be having the regular meeting on the 27th?
I don't.
I was wondering, I mean, I don't, are you guys going, are you gonna be around?
I will be around.
Okay, just curious.
With the, with the budget and everything else coming up, I ain't, I ain't going anywhere for a while, till March.
Okay.
Is February 12th we move, yeah?
So, the, so the Tuesday, December 12th will be hybrid.
Question, I think?
Absolutely.
Always.
The, the regular meeting in December will be?
Hybrid, and I'd like to keep, continue to do in person from the board, so we have that discussion, get to know each other a little bit, and then always have a hybrid as well, always, you know?
Just because when we, when we set the whole year, it was, it was all Zoom, but just, that's fine, that's fine, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it's all, we all should, yeah. Ability for people to come here in person and watch this.
That was your task, work.
To, to hybrid.
Yeah, just wanna make sure. Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, yeah.
Is that a problem, that we didn't say that our meetings are gonna be hybrid?
I don't think so.
Their schedule doesn't mention hybrid. Does that matter, Dave?
We'll check, if we have to make an adjustment to that, we'll do that, well, for that issue. The, yeah, just looking at the, the guidelines for staying in hybrid and all that stuff, it just says you have to make available hybrid, so, for any larger meetings, so, I mean, there's other small things in there as well, but I'll look at that, make sure we haven't made any issue by not saying that in the motion. All right, motion for the 12th for our next special meeting, so. Okay, great. On paper?
Aye.
Okay. Any public comment on anything of interest to the public? Please come up and state your name, wherever you are.
I'm Edward Matson. I just have a question about the public document I put in. Did you all read that letter?
The letter, yeah.
Okay, so you got, because they used to read those at the meetings.
Correct, I sent you a note on it, I said, oh, I didn't, we had set the agenda before I got the letter.
Okay.
And because it's a special meeting, I couldn't add that in, that anything that wasn't already, that wasn't already put in for the special.
Okay.
I did, wrote, you said, we will, we will address that at the next meeting, and so we will address that.
Okay, good.
And we'll make sure I put that in.
Thanks.
Right. And we did, I don't, were you here for the discussion on, that we wanted to look at, you know, the aspects of the director, for the emergency management director?
Well, yeah, no, I was, I already read the job description and did all, went all through that stuff, but.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure everybody has that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Please, why not?
Is there a microphone over here? We're in over here. Alan Goffel, and also, you know, fire chief, and I just wanted to congratulate the board on your joining for this. on your joining for this next two-year term, right? And thank you for your service, and we look forward to working well with the board as we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you want out? Seeing that, we'll move to number six, which is adjournment.
adjournment?
All in favor?
Aye.
You're at.